This October meeting of the Board of Education is called to order, and this meeting has been appropriately advertised as required by law. Ms. Coleman, is it necessary to take another roll call? Yeah, or is it not necessary? And then I will ask whoever wishes to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. The board was, has, just went through in a private executive session. The board has, just as a little background, has contracted with a private firm called HYA to conduct a professional search of candidates to present to the Board of Education for consideration. This process included surveys and public forums to put together a leadership profile, which is the characteristics that we wish to see in our next superintendent. The board just participated over the last hour in an executive session to be presented with the results of the leadership profile. And I'm going to ask the Board of Education now, is there a motion to approve and adopt the leadership profile characteristics for the superintendent of Collingswood Public Schools that we wish to hire? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Coleman, would that be an all in favor vote or a roll call?
I'm gonna do a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Is Nina on the call?
I'm here, but I abstain.
You abstain, okay, thanks. Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Wasn't at the meeting, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you to everyone who was involved with that, and thank you to the associates from HYA. And Ms. Coleman, am I correct that this, the results of this leadership profile will be available to the public on our website?
Yes, tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much. If anyone in the public has any questions about that, please feel free to reach out to the board. Before we go on with our public meeting, I would like to make a statement about the fact that our meeting is virtual this month. We did virtual meetings when COVID first hit, and then, of course, when it hit, we all know gatherings of all kinds had to adjust for safety, so we shifted to virtual meetings. And the public seemed very adept at attending our meetings, and we had good attendance. And as a board, we felt confident that we were getting our required information, and even more about the opening of schools and all that to our public. When the staff re-entered our buildings in September and our students also in October, we decided to meet as a board in person, at site, in our regular meeting place. But for safety reasons, we decided to limit the public to online participation only. We recently received mandates that if we are to meet in person, we have to allow in-person public attendance. The problem with that is that no matter the size of the room, we are limited to 25 people, including the board. And the board is 11 members, plus Ms. Coleman and Dr. Oswald, and our student reps, if they attend in person, and any speakers that we have. So not wanting to limit our public to only 11 or 12 members, and then having to send the 13th member home, we decided that as much as we feel it is very important to return to the buildings, our legal requirement as a Board of Education is to provide the public with our monthly agenda items. And at this time, we felt that an all-virtual format would be the best way to allow that. We do, we talked about this at length, and as a board, we felt that it was extremely important to stress that we do appreciate our staff and students returning to the buildings and juggling technology while participating in online learning. We know that it is a challenge, and we are grateful for your effort, and we admire your determination during what can be very frustrating times. We do remain committed to supporting you, and we look to move back to figuring out in-person or hybrid meetings in the future. But most importantly, we appreciate and support you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move to Section 3 of our agenda, which is our Committee of the Whole section of the agenda. We decided as a group that we're going to adjust Committee of the Whole. And beginning with tonight's meeting, the Board Committee Chairs will review the items on their respective agendas with a little bit of focus on items that might benefit from additional discussion. The purpose of this committee, the Whole Section, is to allow board members to further discuss and have questions answered about the agenda items prior to casting their votes. For members of the public, it's important for you to know that we do meet in private committees the week before the public meeting. And we just thought that by presenting these items during Committee of the Whole, and perhaps hearing any other board members' questions, it might create, give you some more information, create transparency, and we'll see how this works. Hopefully, it improves communication. So we have Ms. Miller from our Personnel Committee, who will present her items.
I'm feeling, just so unclear, and pardon me, I have work on the brain. You want me to go through all of my agenda items?
You can, you can go through, you know, if they're routine, you could just say they are routine.
I mean, I have routine personnel items, some retirements, some resignations, some short-term leaves. And really, that's about it for mine. And then we have some elementary school teachers serving on the 2020-2021 District Equity Council. But that really about sums up mine from the personnel perspective.
And Ms. Miller, we understand that a lot of the personnel items are, you know, because of privacy concerns, there's not a lot you can say about them. So we understand that your report might be a bit more limited to the routine hires and retirement. So we thank you for that. Was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, that's all.
Okay, did anyone have any comments on Ms. Miller's presentation?
I have a question or a comment, or I'm not sure how this falls under it. So when I saw 1312, the district-wide self-care initiatives, when I did see that, it got me thinking a little bit about, well, first, I was a little unclear as to what it was. If that was a wellness curriculum, if that was for staff, or if that was for students. I wasn't sure exactly what that was. So I guess that would be my first question. And then, once that was answered, I didn't know if anyone in any of the other committees, or if any of the other committees had sort of thought about, what are we doing as a district to check in on our students and our teachers? I feel like we've changed how teachers are teaching, we've changed how students are learning. And last year, we had, you know, the huge mental health initiative that passed. And I feel like, have we done it? Was there thought, or was there discussion of doing any kind of a temperature check of how people are doing? So when I saw that, that sort of just kind of got me thinking in that direction. So I guess, I guess first the question and then...
Yeah. Dr. Oswald, could you shed some, some light on the first part of Ms. Severino's question?
Well, 1312 is a district-wide self-care initiative. This one is targeted at staff. And we're starting with the staff to try it kind of in a smaller scale. So we have a teacher, one of our preschool teachers, preschool floater teachers, who really is, what else to say? She's kind of very much into the yoga, meditation, all of that mindfulness, those types of, that's her passion. So she is developing a program for our staff that they can implement on their own time, or they, we can weave into some of our Wednesday afternoons, which is our All-Remote Day. So a lot of that, a lot of that is focused right now on staff. We are also running once a month in Collingswood, what we used to call Panther Academy. We are now calling Panther Care, I believe. And for the Oakland staff, we're calling it the Hawks Nest. And it is, Panther's Den and the Hawks Nest, I think that's what we're calling it. And that is an opportunity for staff members to get together, share ideas, perhaps share frustrations, get something off their chest. And that would be staff among the, kind of with themselves. So we have a few staff members willing to lead that, but it would not be led by administration. It would really be an opportunity for staff to kind of check in with each other, maybe share some successful ideas, or just kind of get some of the frustrations off of their minds, off their chests. So that's kind of, I think, answers, something answers both of those questions.
Okay, and then Ms. Severino, am I correct, the second part was, I guess, what, what are we doing as a district to check on wellness? I assume you mean since school has started and we've been hybrid now.
Well, I think, I mean, I would think the, at the elementary level, I would assume you'd be talking more to parents in terms of the stress levels, anxiety levels with workloads and management of that kind of thing. And then I would think at the middle, in the high school level, if you're just talking about students, you'd be talking more to the students. So I don't know, I don't know the best way, obviously, of, I mean, this would be a, obviously, the district would have much better, and the counselors, I would think, would have a much better sense of how that goes, how that works. But I just think getting some sort of an idea of how everyone's doing, and if, like, finding a way to be responsive to that. But I mean, it's great that the, I think that, that this is happening for, for teachers, at least in a small part, like, that's a, that's a good thing. I just think, thinking about those things, because we did put so much, and obviously, the community is so behind the importance of mental health and the importance of recognizing these things. And I think as a district, we showed that we were too. So I think we need to stay engaged with that.
Okay, just, you want to see some action on follow-up to see?
Or just, that was just my thought. I didn't know if anybody else had any, if I'm just the only one thinking that.
That's a good thought.
Um, you're definitely not the only one thinking that. Actually, as a board rep, we actually came here, that was one of, that's the thing on our agenda, is mental health, because...
So Ms. Yarborough, I'm gonna, I feel terrible cutting you off, but this Committee of the Whole Section is for the board, for the public to see the board members discuss. But I definitely would like you, the next section, well, soon after this, is public comment. And I would definitely love to hear your comment then. I feel terrible cutting you off, it's just a matter of...
No, no, I totally, I'm so sorry, I just wanted to...
No, that's fine. You know what? This is new, this is new to us as well, doing this Committee of the Whole. So the idea is to give the public, let the public hear what we're thinking. And then we definitely welcome your thoughts. So I hope that you're first in line at the public comments section. Thank you for understanding. Okay, Ms. Severino, did you have...
I have all of what Mary said, if possible. Dr. Oswald, do we have any idea what the utilization is for the mental health program?
Chris, you're cutting out, I can't hear you.
Um, do we have any idea what the mental health, the utilization is of the mental health programs that we put into place?
Do I have any idea what the mental health, that, what we voted for last year? Is that what you're asking about?
Yes, is it being utilized?
Yes. So I can answer all, though, I can address all of that. In terms of elementary school, I will tell you, and I know it's not representative, it's not necessarily representative across the board, but the number-one complaint that I've received from elementary school parents is that we're spending too much time on mental health and SEL. And that's a, that's a pretty pervasive concern across the elementary school. And again, that's, those are parents who are unhappy with something we're doing, so I know they're going to speak up. The elementary, the mental health initiative, we have recently reached out to our principals, again, who are working with their teachers to identify any families who do need that support after school. And, you know, in that setting that we have available after school, that is available to us right now, again, through telehealth. But that is available. We did just launch that program last year when we closed down in-person instruction. So, but we did have about a half dozen, six or seven families that were enrolled and active in it. And we maintained about four or five of those families, five at the beginning, and then I think four that stuck with it. So we do have a handful of families that are, are still involved in the mental health from last year. And then we have just started this year, really trying to identify any families who we believe could benefit from that as well. So let me, that's the mental health initiative piece. The elementary initiative, we do a check-in, or the elementary SEL, mental health, we do a check-in with our kids on an almost daily basis. There is an SEL check-in form that the students fill in. Some of our teachers have, have adapted that a little bit to better meet the flow of their classroom, but there is some form of a check-in on a daily basis. At the middle school and high school, we just had a discussion last week, so I can assure you, it is on the front of everybody's minds that we had a discussion with our supervisors and administrators last week to reinforce the need for our teachers, particularly on Wednesdays, to spend some time really focusing on checking in, kind of temperature checks with the kids, and make, and see how they're doing. So, you know, that I think you should see. And I know Mr. Yamamoto sends information to the staff weekly. And I know, I believe, in Windsor, you're on this call, but on Friday's message, I think that was one of the first things at the top of your kind of new information that went out to staff on Friday. So, you know, that, that I think you'll start to see implemented, or, you know, we'll start to refocus a little bit in that direction as well. So I do think that we have the mental health. I mean, I'm not suggesting that we are hitting every angle perfectly. I'm not sure anything's happening perfectly right now, but I think that we are really hitting it from a lot of different angles at different levels.
Any other comments about that topic? All right, any other comments about the Personnel Committee report? All right, and thank you, Ms. Miller, for going first, the first time we did this.
So I had two things, one thought about this last, this thing we were just talking about, and then one quick question about the District Equity Council. So the, kind of a clarifying point, because I think this might be important for the elementary schools, that the parents that are complaining are not, I think they're complaining about the, the SEL measures that are being taken during class time, would be my guess, just from listening to, to my own kid. Because I know there's, there's been a lot of that, which I'm not one of the parents complaining about, but I'm, I'm not sure that's what Mary was asking, which was more about how the kids are managing this new day, whether they're always remote, or whether they're sometimes remote and sometimes hybrid, and how that's happening, that perhaps the elementary kids couldn't even answer on a check-in with their teacher, but the parents might have a better sense of if the kid is super overwhelmed, or they can't handle that much time on a screen. Or, that's actually what I thought you were going to say, Dr. Oswald, in the beginning, was the, was the most thing that you hear from parents, is that it's too much screen time for their kid. So I just wanted to...
No, that I will tell you was actually the opposite. So, yeah, I mean, again, it's, you know, people who are happy, people who are happy are usually, you know, don't speak up too much. But there, you know, people, there are people who think that we should be online from eight in the morning till three in the afternoon, three-thirty in the afternoon, every single day. And I think personally, this is a personal opinion, I think that's cool. But, you know, I think we're trying to hit a middle ground. We give the kids, you know, the students are online, they get their, their four hours of instruction daily, and then we give them a bit of a break, and then they can come back later. We are fine-tuning that sort of support period in the afternoon as well. You know, and I think in our schools overwhelmingly, you know, things are going well. Is everything perfect? Of course not. But, you know, I think the feedback that we're getting is pretty positive. But I think that, you know, tomorrow, we can always do better than we did today. So, you know, if we want to be checking in with every elementary parent across the district, not really sure how we would get that done now, because this is a very different environment than we had in the spring. Because now we have kids back in the building all day. People, you know, in the spring, we had some downtime, so we had lots of time to make calls and check in. Now, we're, you know, folks are in the building, and they're pretty busy all day. So, you know, we can look at that and see if there's a better way to handle that. And I can, I can discuss that with them at our next meeting, which is next week. But that would, that would take a little problem solving to figure out how to get that done.
Thank you for clarifying that, Reagan. That's exactly what I meant. And I certainly was not suggesting that people check in with students every day or make calls, that would be crazy, nobody has the time for that, I understand that. I was just thinking, like, some sort of, I don't know if there's a survey or if there's something, and I was thinking, you know, more for, like I said, to get a temperature check, that is what I was referring to.
Right, and it's, that's a good suggestion, now that we're, you know, in, you know, ending up towards the first quarter. Now that we've been in school to channel our staff and our kids and our families. So it's a good thought, thank you. Any other thoughts for the personnel? Okay, and then our next presentation will be from Ms. Kayden, Chairperson of the Curriculum Committee.
Um, we have a very short list, and really, the only thing to, to bring up that's on the agenda, there's, you know, no field trips, because, of course, there's not at the moment. We have one, just senior privilege, a student moved. It's, it's a part of our policy that if the student has moved and within their senior year, they can finish out the year, so there's not much to discuss there. So it's just, 12.06 is the preliminary plan for an overnight field trip for the seniors this year to go to Orlando, which may or may not happen, depending on the, what the pandemic is looking like by then. Do some, some dates that I believe was early January, right? Or early February, where we could kind of, or parents could make the decision saying, never mind, just kidding, we're, things are not looking good enough, we're not going to send them, is that correct?
January 22nd.
Okay, so January 22nd, they, they can change their, their mind or say that they're not so sure, this is a good plan for now. But we're, we're being optimistic and starting the plan for it. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up that is not on our agenda for tonight, but I think is a great thing, that in part of the district's work with the K Center at Rowan, the doctoral students are coming and using Collingswood as a, as a study district, which will give the district some really great information about how our students are doing and how, how the, the teachers are doing with, with the equity work. So I thought that was something to highlight as well. That's all, it's very short.
I'm talking without unmuting myself, I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Kayden. Is there anyone of the board members who have questions or comments for Ms. Kayden about curriculum? Okay, thank you. And then moving on, we have Ms. Celia, Chairperson of Finance, Buildings and Grounds.
The list is pretty routine. Let me know if you can't hear me, because I know it's hard time before. Couple of things I wanted to talk about, but first, I must say that this is the very last board meeting for Mr. Al Heard. Can't hear me?
It's going in and out for me, sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Mr. Heard for his service to the district. And Al, thank you so much. Last meeting, wish we could be there in person to thank you. Be calling on you very shortly to give us some more information on some of these topics on my list here.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Will be missed.
Thank you.
Touched upon it earlier, a couple of the highlights on this committee's list today are the end and search. We met at the end of September, there's a search committee met with three different vendors to review them and reach to... Very impressive so far.
Chris, I'm going to ask if you could try and get a little closer to the microphone. It seems like when you turn your head a certain way, we can hear you.
Okay, I will try onto, new computer, so maybe it's... I was going to say, we, we met with three different search firms, and we were all very pleased with the firm that we landed on, and decided that it would be much easier to outsource this very important responsibility that has the experience that we need, find the right person for the job. Also, the, on the, on the report this month, there was a problem with the gym, and Mr. Heard could probably fill us in, there was a pipe break, is that correct? And it's spelled in some significant damage. Al, can you let us know where we stand on repairing the floor?
Sure, so we've had an insurance company review the damage done by a broken pipe. What we're ended up doing is replacing the entire gym floor relative to this damage. We were over 50%. And so we now have demolition starting in the gymnasium as early as tomorrow morning for the floor itself. And we're looking at a potential of a four-to-five-week demolition and reinstall of the entire gym floor. And hopefully, we beat the timeframe for what potentially is the start of winter sports, December the 3rd.
Great. Another, another topic is the comprehensive maintenance plan, which everyone will notice is on the agenda, and that is something that we're required to do every year by law. And it, that's for, we have a statutory minimum, and I believe Beth Ann could fill us in on what that is. And that's just, it's a routine annual listing of what we intend on expending and just root to make, separate and apart from any capital improvements that we would be, may or may not be able to make, given the... One more note, the bus company, it seems it's much more expensive this year because of COVID. I know Beth Ann has reported to us that she, there were many, it was all over the board with the amounts for the buses. And Beth Ann, how much more is it this year than it has been in the past because of COVID? Do you have any general ballpark?
We started out, I think the first quote was 180% more. Yeah, last year for one bus route, we were paying about $2.50 per route, per day. The highest came in at almost $700. So what we're proving now is obviously less than seven, but about double than what we were paying last year, but still less than what we started out with. We had to go out about three or four times to get pricing that was lower.
Is it because a number of kids that are allowed on the bus requires more buses, or they're just jacking up the prices?
My personal opinion is they're jacking up the prices. We continue to pay for our buses last year because of the, the law that the governor passed, that you had to continue to pay your contractors. But I don't know if it's fear that the school year might be closing or, or what, but the, the bus companies are really... And again, our routes, because we're not a transporting district, all of our routes are considered special routes. They're either Special Ed routes, or they're Athletic routes. So they're considered special for them. So in a lot of cases, they may not have the buses and/or the workers, because maybe a lot of their workers went and found other work while schools were closed last year. So it could be any number of reasons, but the prices for buses is pretty much out of control in the state of New Jersey right now, so.
Thank you for that. Henry, would you like Mrs. Coleman and Mr. Heard to go over their items that they have to discuss at this point? Or was that overview...
I'm not, did you, I'm not sure, did you address me directly?
I, I did. I hit all, I hit the highlights. Do you want Mr. Heard and Mrs. Coleman to go over their additional things on their list at this point?
Um, I, I think that that's probably something that could be introduced in the, when we get to that, that section of the agenda. Yeah, great. Does anyone have any questions or comments on any items on the Finance, Buildings and Grounds report? Okay, and then this being new, I, I think we'll get the hang of it a little better. I'm just hoping that it gives the board a chance to talk to each other a little more and the public a chance to see us talking and also be a little more informed. Like I said, we meet the week before, and we have these in-depth conversations, and no one sees them. So these are some of the highlights, although a lot of the items on our agenda are pretty standard. And it seems like we rubber-stamp them. Some of the topics are, you know, require more discussion, of course. And we're hoping to bring that to you in a, in a smoother format in the future. This is also a place where, in the past, we have our student representatives who give reports about what's going on with students. But it has been mentioned in previous years by other board members that it might be nice to hear their voice as well. So Ms. Coleman, would it be appropriate for the student reps to comment in this Committee of the Whole Session? Or is that something that's not quite proven?
Or is that something that's not quite protocol according to the rules?
I mean, we're gonna get to them in a in a couple of minutes. As soon as you get going with the agenda, they usually go on pretty early. So.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions for our committee of the whole session?
I have a quick question that came up simply because of Al talking about the gym floor. So indoor sports is going to be a thing?
Yes.
How does that work? Or is that not, is this not the time for that question?
The indoor sports, indoor athletics, wrestling, basketball, anything else indoors has been approved by, well, the governor has tossed it to the NJSAA who has approved for moving forward with indoor sports. Beginning December 3rd is the first day. They are limited in capacity in the the space that they have and a number of people that they can have. I think it's 25 people in the space and they can. So if we have events, games and such, there won't be any fans. It'll just be for the players and coaches because by the time you get those folks into the gym, it will be, you'll be at your capacity. So.
Has that changed? I remember back, I honestly don't remember exactly when, when we were talking about kind of our plans for when we were opening things up to outside sports or or rec programs. Has that changed our protocol at all? Or are we sticking to the, I believe it was February 1st-ish?
We are for outside, we're sticking for outside events, outside, we're sticking to, you know, probably reviewing in January with a plan to reopen in February, if that makes sense. You know, we don't know if that'll make sense at that point. We have had some requests for the use of our facility prior to February and we've denied them. And what really adds to that now is what Mr. Hurd described with the gym floor.
Right.
So the gym floor, you know, if it's not done by the first day of of winter sports season, December 3rd, which we hope it is, that will require us to shuffle some things around. And I think it would just get too chaotic with outside organizations, you know, also trying to trying to to fit into that little, the small space that we have. So we're sort of taking a breather with that right now and focusing on our own school-based programs. And even that, those obviously will be at a much smaller capacity. So the the district is following the NJSA guidelines right now. You know, we all know we're watching what's happening around the country and certainly, you know, around the state and certainly around the country. So, you know, I'm not foolish enough to think that those may not change moving ahead too. We still have about a little over a month before that starts. And I don't think anybody has an idea of what's gonna happen in the next month.
Thanks for the update. I appreciate it.
I just wondered if if we are able to go ahead with indoor sports. Is there some conversation about being able to stream them so that the community can still see the kids playing?
I don't believe, we had the, we had a sales pitch, I guess you would say. We had an opportunity to buy equipment that would allow us to do that a couple of years ago. It's very, very expensive. But we did not, it's just, it was, it was outside of our price range and our budget. So we do not have the equipment that necessarily allows us to do that. We can likely do a handful of games, but I don't know that we're gonna have the staff or the capacity to do game, a lot of games and matches. We do a couple of season right now, but I don't know that we would have the capacity to do more than that.
Okay, anyone else before we exit committee of the whole? All right, is there a motion to leave committee of the whole?
No move.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, and I'm going to take the liberty of moving to section nine, which is our student reports. Firstly, because I I know I cut off Ms. Yarborough. So if she had a comment to make about any of the committee, the whole items that were brought up or any of our board member, our student reps, and then also they have their committee reports. So Ms. Yarborough, did you have, wanna proceed with your question?
Sure. I was just basically saying that I agreed with one of the board members about mental health. I feel like it's really overlooked and a lot of times, even as like even adults get a lot of stuff piled on them and we don't stop to think about like what's really going on. Are we really okay? And I know a couple of people who are having really like bad mental breakdowns with all this going on and they're, it's hard for them to handle it. And I feel like we don't talk about it a lot and it's kind of like hushed, but I think we should talk about it. And I I agreed with one of the board members when he said maybe doing a survey or something, I don't know. But also I feel like a good way we could do that is by promoting student voice. You, if you hear for them, if you, if you actually sit down and listen to them and hear from them yourself, I feel like they will, you'll find out a lot that you don't really know. That's just my opinion.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing. We appreciate your insight from the student point of view. It was great. Anyone else have, any of the other student representatives have comments on the committee of the whole discussions of board members?
I would like to add on to something. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I agree completely with what Ms. Severino, I don't, I think that's how you say it. I'm sorry if I messed it up. I agree. I think that mental health is kind of overlooked, not, I don't know, like shade to Collinswood. I think just, it feels like right now with the schoolwork we get, it feels more about the work instead of how we are mentally. Because we can't move forward with our progress if we're not mentally there. And I think sometimes, you know, just taking a break out of the week, like we have like the Wednesdays where we have the shorter periods. I think during those times, if we really got to like sit down and maybe have a conversation with our counselors or maybe just step in with our teachers, just having that conversation with them. Because like Asia says, some people are really not there right now. And it's hard even, you know, I know the counselors do their best, especially with the seniors now. Like it's, it's hard for us to, you know, get into that college process. But I think having, instead of just sending us resources on things we should do, it should be more of a come to us and talk to us about this because it's kind of hard. You feel a little bit intimidated to go to someone to tell them about your problems. I think if they came to us to talk about how we feel and stuff like that, that would be good. But thank you.
Um, along with what Ayana just said, I totally agree with like, I think we overlook like how these, like how students like right now, like how we're doing. And like, it is hard for counselors to like connect with us because like, we like, we don't have like our usual like meetings that we can just go talk to them about like our daily lives. Because like now we just need to have a meeting about like any situation. Like, for example, I went today to go see my counselor to talk about like my college application. And it was like nice to actually like finally talk to my counselor one-on-one. But it was just like not enough time to talk about like more of what we're dealing with right now. Like, and along with Wednesdays for school, I just think in my opinion, like for having like an eight-period day. As a student, some teachers, like we go on for Zoom and we like do our attendance and then we just leave. And I just think that like on Wednesdays, instead of having an eight-period day for only like 20 minutes of class, I just think that it's like not, I don't, I wouldn't say a waste of time, but I just think it's like we're not getting much out of that as like we should. And I think that like Wednesday is like, like what Ayana like said, like I think that would be a good day to talk to your counselor like one-on-one. Or like, if you need to have extra help with your teachers, have those like meetings with like your teachers. And they can be on the Zoom calls on Wednesdays and like have the the same schedule. But I just don't think that like the eight-period days of like having 20 minutes or 30 minutes of a class or whatever it is, is actually like helping us. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for sharing your thoughts. Yeah, it's a stressful time for everyone. And a lot of planning had to go into figuring out how to get everyone back to school. And now that everyone's participating in school, you know, hybrid virtual, it's important to make sure that everyone's well-being is intact. So it's good to hear it right from the students. Thank you. And students, do you also want to use this time to present your reports?
Yeah, um, I'll, like, I'll go, I guess. For like school right now, obviously, it's a little different. Like, I think those teachers are doing the best as like ten to connect with like the hy- like hybrid students and the kids that are online. And I think it's like, it's kind of weird for being in class because I feel like sometimes the teachers are trying to pay so much more attention to the kids that are online because like they're obviously online. And I feel like sometimes like as hybrid students, we get left out with certain things because the teachers are so much more engaged with like the kids online. And I just don't know like how to adjust that. Like it's, I, I, it's like right now for teachers, obviously, it's so much more difficult, like their whole like teaching. Like they're, the way that they teach is obviously so much more different. And I just like, don't know how we could like equal that out in a way, if you get what I'm saying. Like, I just feel like kids are more, I, they're, the kids are online are more like interacting with the teachers and the kids that are actually in school. And I just feel like as a student, I think it's like, it, it, it's like disappointing because like I kind of wanted to have like the same like high school experience. Like, obviously, it's not gonna be the same. But I just feel like from being a hybrid student, I want to be engaged with my teacher as much as possible. And it's just like hard for me to engage when like they're more focused on the kids online. Thank you.
Thanks for your thoughts.
Um, I was gonna say that I do, I agree with Nicolette. I feel like I don't even know, like she said, I don't even know how you would even fix that because it's like you, like they're, they're, and honestly, the teachers are trying their best to give like 50/50 attention to everyone. It's just that, it's just so hard because we're so used to having their full attention in school. And then it's like, you have a question, but like they're talking and you want to interrupt them and the bell rings and it's like, oh, well, I guess my question's not gonna get answered. You're just like, I don't know. It's just kind of weird. But I guess it's something we'll just have to get used to or make the best out of our circumstances. But my student report, recently, me and Ayana had a meeting with Mr. Newman, Mr. Jenna and two students at our school about a racial slur issue. And the meeting was really good. I think that the two students got a lot out of it. And I feel like the way that Mr. Jenna handled it was like really, really well. And Mr. Philman also, who is the social justice teacher, um, I feel like the way that everyone handled it, like the administrators were really supportive and they listened to us and they set up meetings and I feel like we got a lot done. Like being in person, it was way different than online. Like we actually, it was more intimate. We got to see each other and like feel, like, I don't know, feel the emotions, I guess. And I feel like it was really effective. And I just wanted you guys to know, if you guys didn't know, that we had that meeting, had that meeting, I think, a couple of days ago. Oh, no, last, last Tuesday, I think we had the meeting, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for filling us in. Is there any other students of our student representatives who have high school happenings that they wanted to share?
Yes, I agree with both Nicolette and Asia said about having the hybrid learning style. I think that sometimes it's, it's usually switched. Sometimes teachers get too engaged with the people in school and then forget about the online kids as well. Like everyone's saying like, I don't know how you could do that, but I feel like that may affect some people's learning styles. Because I, like for me, I'm more a visual person, so I think going into hybrid is something that I need. So when I come in and the teachers are more focused on online, that's kind of hard for me because of how I learned. It's difficult for me to adjust. But besides that, I think how the procedures are and how the whole going to class at the certain times and leveling leveling it out for people to leave and not too much traffic in between. I think that they're making it as safe as possible. But besides that, I think the teachers are doing a great job adjusting to the learning styles that we have to go through. So thank you.
We appreciate the point of your viewpoints from all three of you. Thank you for sharing. And you are welcome to stay and join the rest of our very exciting meeting if you wish. Or you're welcome to head out and do homework if you want. And again, we appreciate your thoughts. We look forward to seeing you again at next month's meeting. Okay, we will move on to what was section four of our agenda, our presentation from Mr. Yamamoto.
Everyone, tonight I'm presenting the SSDS or Student Safety Data Systems Report. Basically, twice a year, districts need to provide the state a list of all serious discipline issues, suspensions, HIV investigations, programs and trainings. And so this following information is pertaining to the second report period that went from January 1st to June 30th of this past school year, or maybe I should say March 13th of this past school year. During that time, we had five HIV investigations, three of which were confirmed. We reported 15 HIV trainings and 71 programs to the states. Basically, our programs, training, support, a positive school climate, ways to build better student relations, restorative practice and greater HIV awareness in our schools. We also spent a lot of time learning about equity as well as trauma-informed practices. Regarding discipline, we report those cases that reach the SSDS level. In other words, incidents that involve violence, vandalism, substance offense, weapons offense, and any HIV investigations. We also need to report incidents that lead to student removal. And for that report, for this past report period, we had 13 SSDS incidents and 31 situations where we had to remove a student from school. Thank you. Does any board member have any questions for me?
Just real quick, the leading to removal means a suspension, not permanently removed, right?
Suspension, yes, suspension. So in school or out?
Got it. To remove from the classroom.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for sharing that. I had a question about restorative practices. And it sounded almost like Ms. Yarborough was sharing something, I don't know, in her example, if that was an example of restorative justice or any of the approaches that are happening at the school. But something that was interesting, and I know in January, there was a bill that was passed around creating restorative justice pilot programs in the state. I think the DOE has held off on it. But just curious about how restorative justice is living out in, in your approach here.
So I would say depending on the, I guess, the situation. But a lot of times, I know at the high school and middle school, they do try to approach it where they have a discussion with the kids. They try to have it so that there is more of an understanding of why the action was like causes harm to other people versus just here is a, you know, punishment or here's a consequence. And then there's no understanding of what it actually caused or what would harm it cause other people. So like I know at the high school, they have, last year or prior to us being remote, they did have a group where they had students talking to each other, trying to share experiences.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing. I appreciate it.
Sure.
I had a question. Were 31 removals, most of those before everyone went remote? Or did events still occur after the move to virtual?
That was before, probably majority, almost everyone was before the removal. Before we went remote, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. I was wondering if it's at all possible to start to share out, maybe just with the board to start, if not with the public demographics, like breakdowns for these incidents?
That's, we could look into that. That's something that I would have to talk over. Also, depending on the, I guess, the percentage of individuals that maybe it affected, that could cause something where we could actually, where the public could pinpoint who the actual incident was because there are some racial groups that we have a very small percentage. But it is something that we can look into.
Maybe something to share with the board.
Okay.
If not, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions or comments for Mr. Yamamoto?
Maybe you can answer this in response to Syria's question. I I think, don't we have to report to the state, though, demographics of school suspension and removal?
I know there was a report that goes monthly to the superintendent's office. I'm not familiar with what actually is on that report, though.
Okay, I can look into that, too.
Anyone else? Thank you for your report, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is section five, future dates and miscellaneous information. There are some dates listed for pretty much just breaks when schools closed and our next Board of Education meeting. We also now moving to section six on our agenda, which is routine board business. We have two items. One is the motion to approve the minutes of the September 2020 regular board meeting. So is there a motion to approve that? Minutes of the September twenty twenty regular board meeting, um, so is there a motion to approve that?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then um, the next item is six point oh two, um, this is our resolution um, for electronic communication during board meetings, um, so I encourage everyone to read that. And this um, is just some more um, you know, uh, outlines about how we can communicate with each other. Um, I during these electronic meetings, um, in the past, we had people typing in their comments and then those comments were to be read. Um, now, members of the public will be free to unmute themselves and speak their questions um, as very similar similarly to how we did in a. Um, in-person meeting, however, um, they are still limited to things like the five-minute rule, they still need to um, state their name and address. Um, they still need to adhere to um, whether it's the first section where we're making comments. On items on the agenda or the second one that's open to more general comments and of course, there's still guidelines um, that members of the public um, are not permitted to disrupt the meeting and will be um. Stopped if they do so, so um, again, it's, you know, moving towards figuring out how to do these electronic meetings and really giving everybody the true voice that they had in person. Um, I don't believe we have to take any action on that, Ms. Coleman, do we?
Actually, we do, so I could just have a motion and a second and then all in favor.
Is there a motion to um, approve the resolution of the Collins Report of Education, Electronic Communications During Board Meetings Resolution?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto, thank you, moving on to s- section seven is our first opportunity for public comment. Uh, please state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Uh, the purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda, additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. And the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators before we take public comments. Dr. Oswald, is there a protocol or do people just, how do the people, how do people indicate that they will speak?
Sorry about that, sorry, um, if folks want to put their name in the chat just to indicate that they have something to say, then we can just call, call on folks to call people as they have, well, in here on the order. Um, so Ms. Rossi would like has something to say, Jen, do you want to just unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you, uh, Jen Rossi, one one four East Palmer Avenue, Collingswood. I just wanted to make a comment in regards to the uh, SCL services that have been happening that I've been observing uh, with my daughter at the elementary school. Uh, I've found that the uh, efforts of uh, Ms. Alexi have been fantastic. Uh, the virtual recess is something that my daughter has been looking forward to for like a week in advance of it coming. Uh, that there's a new mindfulness group, so that's something else that's been really advantageous for the kids uh, during this time, especially kids who are doing uh, for remote like my daughter. Um, I think that the day is at first was really rough, like during those first two weeks, but things have gotten a lot better. Uh, the lunch break with the office hours has really worked well for our family, so I would like to continue to see that happening. Um, and just to keep saying that things are getting better um, for us as a full remote uh, family here. The Google form, I mean, it kind of feels like as far as what my daughter participates in every morning for her SCL check-in. That kind of feels a little bit maybe forced in the morning because, you know, hey, she's still in a good mood, everybody's green, you know, it's their morning people. I just wanted to say thank you for those efforts and I have been seeing, you know, we have been experiencing the benefit of those SCL, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Or any other members of the public um, wish to make a comment on items listed on the agenda, please type your name and we'll call on you so you can unmute yourself.
Uh, Roger Chu.
Can't hear you, Roger.
Roger, we can't, you're not muted, but we're not hearing you. Do you have a speaker plugged in?
Hello, there you go.
Listening.
Okay, awesome, sorry about that, Roger Chu, two four seven Crestmont Terrace, uh, I'd like to uh, echo uh, Ms. Rivera's, uh, I guess question to uh, Ms. Yamamoto. Uh, as a number of the public, um, I think it's helpful to have a school performance and also uh, discipline data reported at the disaggregated level. Uh, this including, you know, suspensions by race, uh, and social economic class, um, AP enrollment by race and social economic class, these are. Uh, numbers and figures that are not publicly available through the New Jersey State uh, Performance Report. Uh, but they're really helpful for understanding uh, how the school uh interacts with students of different classes and so I'd like to. Uh, I guess offer my public support and comment and uh, hope that the school and the board uh, do publish. Uh, school performance data disaggregated by race, social, economic class and other such things, thank you.
Right, I I can respond to that because it's important that the board understand, as Mr. Yamamoto said. Just as we do on the school performance report, which is a statewide, is a uniform report across the state, there is a minimum number of students that has to fall into any category for that number to be reported. Otherwise, as Ms. Yamamoto stated, a a a member of the public can back into who that exact, who that student is. Um, so that's a number that we would have to look at at the district level and they and and, you know, consider it at the school level. In an effort to ensure that the number, um, that we have a minimum number of students in any category and or and to to release that information. Um, otherwise, you will find yourselves um, getting in trouble or um, allowing members of the public to back into information. Um, through the process of elimination, so that's a, that's a uh, statewide practice has been for many, many years. Um, at at the local level, obviously, that that number would have to be significantly smaller. Yeah, and the smaller that number gets, the greater the chance that that members of the public can back into identifying an individual or a smaller group of individuals. So that's the reason that sometimes, not to say that we couldn't do large scale, but you probably would not be able to do that on a monthly basis because on a monthly basis, those numbers are going to be relatively small.
Uh, do you mind if I ask a follow-up question, uh, so I know, for example, in Pennsylvania, there's no um. Uh, specific state guideline in terms of the minimum end size for disaggregation, uh, is there a New Jersey? Uh, statute or mandatory procedure from the uh, New Jersey Department of Education? Uh, that defines specifically the end sizes required for disaggregation of of data?
There is, um, I don't know, Windsor's still on the call, if you know that number Windsor, um, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
I think it might be twenty.
Yeah, it it has fluctuated between twenty and thirty, that's why I'm not sure which one it is today.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public wish to speak in our first public comments section?
Nobody else right now.
Okay, so move move on to section eight on our agenda, our superintendent's report.
Okay, so we have the enrollment enrollment report um, for. Um, September two thousand twenty, so at the end of last month, we had, we had two thousand two hundred and eighteen students, down about eighteen students from last year. Um, I would be willing to bet that a large number of those were preschool students, um, we did have a drop in our preschool enrollment this year with um, the COVID situation. The school safety drill report, we are running our safety drills, um, fire drills and school safety drills. Um, when we do have our students, uh, since our students are in a hybrid schedule right now, any in-school safety drill that we run is actually run twice, once for the blue team, once for the gold team. Um, our suspension report, you'll see none there and the anti-bullying report, we have not had any incidents this month, uh, reported this month. And then you'll see a whole host of policies up for a first reading. This month, and these will roll over to second readings next month, so if any board members have comments or concerns about any policies. We can certainly bring them up at now or at committees next month.
Thank you, Dr. Oswald, uh, section ten, um, we, because we had our student reports for section nine, so section ten will be our report from Ms. Coleman, our Business Administrator Board Secretary Report.
Thank you, Ms. Henry, um, just to piggyback on what Ms. Celia said, um, this is Mr. Hurd's um, last board meeting with everybody, so I encourage everyone to. Wish Mr. Hurd well and send him emails and um, let him know he'll be missed, um. Item ten point oh one are your September monthly transfers, item ten point oh two is your monthly financial statements, your board secretary report, cash reports, um, as well as all the financial backup. Um, ten point oh three is your student activity uh, cash report. Item ten point oh four is your September uh, food service financial statement for the cafeteria operations. And item ten point oh five is the list of the purchase orders to be approved tonight and ten point oh six is the warrants um, that will be issued and paid tomorrow morning. Okay.
Again, speaking without unmuting, thank you, um, so our, uh, we've already done our report for section eleven, Buildings, Grounds and Finance Committee. So do we have a motion for items eleven oh one through? Eleven.
Fourteen.
Thirteen, thank you, fourteen, fourteen, um, do we have a motion for those items?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Cecilia? Chris Strappoff? Mr. Stotts, I got you, Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Section twelve is would be asking for approval for our curriculum committee items, uh, before I asked for those motions to approve, um, do we have any questions or comments from board members before voting? Okay, then I'm seeking approval for items twelve point oh one through twelve point oh six, is there a motion?
Don't move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Sarah.
Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden? Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Cecilia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, the letter, uh, eleven point oh two where I abstained.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes. And section um, thirteen would be approval of our personnel items, are there questions or comments from board members before voting on items thirteen point oh one through thirteen point one nine? Okay, then is there a motion for those items?
Don't move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Cecilia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstained.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes, except for any items marked with any asterisks where I abstained.
Ms. Henry?
Yes. Section fourteen is our policy and miscellaneous question, um, Dr. Oswald, do you have comment on that?
Um, yeah, eighty five, excuse me, eighty five sixty one is a policy regarding procurement for this school nutrition program. Uh, that's the second reading for that policy and fourteen oh two is just a reaffirmation of no HIV reports uh, reported at the end of, this actually goes back to the end of last school year. Um, so looking for approval of fourteen oh one and two.
Okay, do we have motions for those items?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Cecilia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes. And Ms. Coleman, our meeting took a little bit of a different format tonight, um, I just want to make sure that we got all our necessary um, votes for everything, did we come out of? I'm not sure, we had a motion to come out of executive session, um, did we get our committee of the whole, so did we get all of those votes?
We did, we did.
I'm just checking because our format.
No, we did, yeah.
Thank you, um, and so with that, um, I would like to thank the board and the community for um. And and Dr. Oswald and Ms. Coleman for and our student reps for um. Letting us get work our way through this new format, again, we moved to the discussion items earlier to committee of the whole, um, it's so that. Everyone could have more of a discussion about it and hopefully, um, it'll run a bit more smoothly in the future and it'll make for a more uh, meaningful meeting for um, everyone involved, board members, um, administration and public. So that that is the hope, we'll see how it works, uh, that brings us to section fifteen on our agenda, it is our second opportunity for public participation and as before, please um. Type your name into the comment box so we know that you would like to speak and when we call your name, you can unmute yourself, state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less and once again, the public is reminded. That attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to comment at this time?
Jen Rossi?
Thank you, uh, Jen Rossi, still at one one four East Palmer Avenue, I did have a question regards to uh, the items, I think it was in thirteen for the Equity. Council, yes, I was wondering what that was, the organization, I I believe that's going to be staff from the looks of it, um, can you tell us what the Equity Council is, please?
Jenny, you want me to take that?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, um, so Jen, the Equity Council started last year as a middle school, high school group, uh, we're working with Rowan's Case Center and Dr. Zion at Rowan, uh, Rowan University. Last year's council started with um, just a really um, solid introduction to equity, the concept of equity from multiple angles, she did a really nice job. Um, getting everybody on the council up to speed, um, on just the some, the the many, many different facets of equity that we can examine. Um, over that, then at, as we moved toward the end of last school year, um, we made the decision to expand that council to include um, preschool through grade twelve. So we did that at the end of last school year, over the summer, the Equity Council members who had not been part of the council, the new members who had not been part of it last year. Um, met with Dr. Zion um, for a full day where she went through um, many of the activities and the discussions that we had the previous year with the sole attempt to catch everybody up and start this year with everybody sort of, I don't, uh, level playing field. The Equity Council, um, both K to twelve, preschool to twelve, met with um, a presenter or workshop facilitator Cornelius Minor. Over the summer twice, um, and then the entire staff met with Cornelius on that PD day back at the beginning of October. So the Equity Council now will um, take a look, now will examine, um, they're looking at five different areas. Um, that we can kind of five different lenses through which to view equity in the district. Um, they'll work monthly with Dr. Zion, she will meet with them, we will meet all meet together the second or third Wednesday of every month for two hours. Um, and it is also sort of what brought us in to the Rowan doctoral student mix, so they will be, will be working with the. So they will, will be working with the doctoral students as well during that council. The five different areas that we're looking at are student voice, if I remember these off the top of my head, student voice, school climate and discipline, curriculum. That's three. I usually get four, letting myself down. Couple others, curriculum, student voice, climate and discipline, community, staff, community, parent and family community relations, and there's one more. But those are, there are five areas, and I can share, I can, I can email you the other one if you'd like. And then, so they'll work with Dr. Zion throughout the school year. At the end, hopefully come up with a comprehensive plan that addresses steps in each of those five areas.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kate Delaney, sorry, Kate. Kate, if you're speaking, you're muted. There you go.
Okay, sorry. I was having a hard time with my computer there. Um, I want to ask a quick question. Last year, towards the end of the year, there was a part-time librarian hired. And I was wondering if that librarian would be having any kind of regular interaction with the elementary students, and if so, when that might begin?
Dr. Oswald, can you address that?
Yeah, I don't, we did not hire an elementary librarian at the end of last, at the end of last year.
Like that was going to circulate, I believe, between the, the five elementaries in Oakland?
Oh, the beginning, that was the beginning of last year. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, Faith has been with us now. She was with us last year. She's back with us again this year. Faith is working directly with our teachers. She's actually one of the lead, one of the lead voices in the SCL work. So she's working with our staff to bring them up to speed and continually, continually kind of embed training with them on introducing SCL through, through text and, and, you know, some other functions of a media center. And, yeah, so she's really busy right now, working with our staff and sort of bringing them up, getting them prepared to be able to deliver lessons throughout the course of the school day. So there is no, her position is not one that will have her interacting directly with kids alone in the, in the frame of kids kind of leaving the classroom and going to library. That's not, that is not, and has never been the plan with her. So she's really there to support the classroom teachers with some SCL work, with some research work. She really focuses on SCL with the teachers at the lower elementary levels. And at the upper elementary level, she focuses on writing and research.
She's done a great job this year, I've seen, taking advantage of the virtual to have a bunch, a couple of authors come and do, do book talks with the students in the elementary schools I saw. That looked pretty neat.
Yeah, Faith is a pretty special educator. She, she is super, super passionate about what she does.
All right, are there other questions from the public?
No one else right now.
Seeing none, we will move to our section 16, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I actually wanted to make a comment, if possible. I didn't want to interrupt the public speaking time. Going back to my question earlier and just wanting to acknowledge some of the feedback that I got around the demographics information that I requested. And of course, anything that keeps our, the privacy and identity of our youth safe is always top priority and most important. A suggestion I wanted to give is potentially maybe we could start at looking at the last two years cumulatively of that demographic data to share with the public and the board, if that's at all possible. I just, I would really love to see some progress in that direction. And of course, something we can talk about more offline as well.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? Ken, I thank everyone again for their input and their patience tonight. I think it was good to hear from more people than we usually do. So thanks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.